Welcome everyone, it's August fourteenth. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, very good. Welcome folks, and for the folks at home, welcome. Tonight's meeting, the agenda is up on the screen there. Amanda, if you would be kind enough to scroll over there. Folks can see what we'll be discussing. Alright. It should be one of our shorter meetings tonight, we'll see. Okay, very good. So we will begin as we do the first meeting of each month with the monthly statement of the supervisor. And for the folks at home, this is a report of the funds for the period ending July thirty first. And for the month, we started out with an opening balance of five million seven hundred and seventy-three thousand. We had receipts of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, hundred and sixteen dollars, Amanda, folks can see on the screen as well. And I'll load up for them. We had dispersments of three hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and nineteen, leaving and ending balance of five thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and twenty-four... Seven hundred and four thousand, twenty-four dollars and forty cents. You have in addition to the bank statements, your monthly variance reports. And Harry, did you find your community preservation fund number?
One million eighty-eight.
One million eighty-eight, and I think we just had a check come in the other day. We'll be going over one point one million of that fund. We have very few budget adjustments, but if you would take a look at those as well, if you haven't had a chance to do so already. Okay, and a couple of highlights from the supervisor's report. A quarterly sales tax revenue of ninety-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine is our apportionment. The transfer tax that was reported in this month was seventeen thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven. Okay. Any questions about the supervisor's report? If not, who would like to make a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and these very few budget adjustments. Who would like to make a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We also have a town clerk report, and Claire is here filling in for Sue McKenna, who is still out with her knee surgery. And we expect her back very soon, and she's doing well. So Claire?
Okay, the town clerk's report goes period July first to July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor, one thousand six hundred and ten dollars and twenty cents. Amount paid to New York State Ag and Markets, fifty-one dollars. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Amount paid to New York State D E C, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty cents for total state, county, and local revenue of two thousand fifty-six dollars. And pursuant to Section twenty-seven, sub one of the town law, Sue McKenna certifies that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by her during the period stated above in connection with her office accepting only such fees and monies, the application of which are otherwise provided by law.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a couple of announcements that we would like to make before we get started and with public comment period as well. First of all, we'd like to let you know that our next meeting, normally our second meeting of the month in August would have been scheduled for eight days from now, that's August twenty-second. We are canceling that town board meeting, so we want to let you know that the next meeting will be on September eleventh, the first... Sorry, the second Tuesday in September. We'd also like to let you know some good news. First of all, the tennis court project is complete. We had the pleasure of doing a ripping cutting and seeing these wonderful new courts, and it's just a huge difference between the courts that were unplayable and these courts that we have now. The project was a little later than we hoped, but I think in the final analysis, I think we'll be very happy with the condition of these new courts. It's a great asset to the community. So we invite you to go out there and to take a look and hopefully to play on the tennis courts. The other announcement we have, something we're very excited to tell you about, after I'd say probably two years of looking into this project, our new town website will begin on August twenty-third. You can just go to the same URL, www.rehock.org, and you will see the changes instantly. We would probably in advance ask for your patience, because I'm sure it'll be a sort of a soft opening, if you will, and that we'll have a couple of things that we'll need to work out with the website. But I would like to bring to your attention, one of the reasons that we're very excited about this new town website is because you can sign up to receive either email or text alerts about any topics that you're interested in. And they will come to you automatically when they're sent out. So it's a way again of us trying to bring government a little bit closer to you so that you can be aware of what's transpiring in your community. So many thanks to Sarah and the Communications Committee, who have been working with our vendor Civic Plus. And obviously, we'll take lots of suggestions as you begin to navigate through the website. Any advice you have for us, we'd be happy to accept. So again, that's August twenty-third. So just nearly a week's time after you see this at home, the new website will be up tomorrow.
It's gonna be August twenty-third at four P M.
At four P M, sorry.
To be clear, so don't call it ten-thirty wondering why it's still open. It's gonna be like flipping a switch, and it's gonna be a four P M sharp, so.
Okay.
Don't.
Very good, well, we'll have a switch.
You're gonna say August twenty-four.
Are we gonna have a switch ceremony?
We could.
You never heard of the Floris?
It's not us flipping it, but we could do that.
Okay, well, that'd be a fun thing to do.
Yep.
And it would be appropriate this time to thank our webmaster for, I don't even know how many years, so I won't venture to guess, but Dick Wambach has run our town website for a very long time and done really a terrific job with the website. Ultimately, we went with another company that had a lot of features to software, but Dick has been really terrific with running our town website, so we want to thank him for all the years. Okay. So, on that note, any other announcements folks want to make? Okay. Public comment period, would anybody like to make some public comments? Linda, thank you.
Linda Keel in Pitts and Lane Red Hook. On August fourth, which is ten days ago, I've sent you all a letter regarding the Americans with Disabilities Act on two projects. One being Papa's Best Batch BBQ, and the other one being Schaefer's Motel. Now, the Papa's Best Batch is completely not in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. There is no handicapped bathroom. It's a regular bathroom. It's way over in the back, it's not accessible. You have to go over rough land, and when you get there, which I did today, there was a big puddle of water, so it would be terribly inappropriate for anyone to try and use that bathroom. The parking space had a picnic table in it. Now, also, the trees have all of these signs which are not in conformance with our zoning code. You haven't done anything. It's been six times this year, and I've mentioned this problem other years. You've done nothing. You've not directed your employees to take appropriate action. Regarding the Schaefer Motel, it also is not in compliance according to the plans that were drawn up and eventually voted on by the planning board. It's five pages, I listed all the sections that they have to consider, and they have not. It's not appropriate for someone to try and use that motel with the elevations. The parking is not correct. You have to access behind parked cars in order to get to the sidewalk. There is no room assigned for the disabled. One has to be assigned and held. If it's not used, then they can offer it to somebody else. That one has to be assigned. It's not done. You're getting money for recreation park for the disabled, yet these projects you don't do. It's not right. You say the pledge, but you should add, except for the disabled. You need to do better.
Thank you, Linda. Would anybody else like to make some public comments?
Thank you, my name is Pamela Govron Ali, and I live on Douglas Tildra, I've been Red Hook. And I'm here to request an updated needs assessment for Red Hook Park West, and that it be conducted by an impartial firm. And I know that a petition was submitted recently requesting as much, and from what I understand, it was signed by several hundred members of the community. And I just had a few questions, and I don't know if there's an opportunity to answer them now, but I just wanted to kind of put them out there, because I'm wondering in what way Red... this park will impact the wetland. I know that there have been two wetland studies done, and I was wondering why the second report was done after an initial report had been done and paid for. And I'm also interested in learning more about the local laws on erosion sediment control, because it's a little difficult to find in the Red Hook town legislation, any information on that. And lastly, I wanted to find out about when the site was last farmed and what was grown there, because there are potential pesticide issues. But I know that at the last few meetings that I've attended, that there has been mention of the fact that a needs assessment will be done and updated one, so I would just love to know more about that, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, would anybody else like to make some public comments? Okay. So we can jump right into our agenda items. The first item we have is carryover from a previous meeting, and that was the extension of our moratorium on large-scale extractions. We refer to that as Local Law Number Four of two thousand eighteen. We did not pass that extension at the last meeting, because we needed a piece of correspondence with the planning board, which we just received. County planning as well, and we got our notes on the planning board. Did we get a hard copy in our folder? Okay.
I have the county one.
Okay, yeah, I don't think we got the hard copy, but the planning board did send their...
I got a copy of it, hold on.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Okay. So fine, we do have this resolution, this would be resolution number...
Forty-six.
Forty-six, Claire? Okay, dated August fourteenth. And what the resolution is, is authorizing the adoption by the town board of the town of Red Hook, Local Law D proposed of two thousand eighteen, which we'll now call Local Law Number Four. And it's an extension of a moratorium on large-scale commercial extractions, which would include water harvesting and sale, timber harvesting, soil mining, other types of agro-land mining as well, until we can adopt appropriate regulations guarding these topics. So that is resolution number forty-six, enacting a six-month extension of the moratorium. Public hearing was held on July tenth last month, and all individuals were invited to speak, and we have had referral comments from both the county and local planning board. And now therefore be resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook that we adopt said Local Law D proposed, now called Local Law Number Four, to enact that six-month extension of the moratorium, and I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will go on to our second item on the agenda, which is in fact that discussion of a needs assessment. And so at our last meeting, we, again, trying to take in all the comments that we can from the public. There was some desire to update our needs assessment so that we can take current numbers, or rather, numbers from back in the nineties, and bring them up to today's calculations to ensure that our athletic fields and the need for additional athletic fields of all types for all individuals is quantified in a way that we can have confidence and also moving forward as we plan for potentially additional phases of this project, and also to take into account what we now know to be significant development coming in in the form of Hoffman Estates and other developments that are now breaking ground. So to that end, we have Brandy Nelson here from Ty &amp; Bond. And Ty &amp; Bond is the engineering firm that we hired to essentially tweak our adopted master plan for the Rec Park expansion to accommodate an ADA-accessible multi-use field where people of all abilities, challenged or not, can play sports. So Brandy, thank you very much. And did you want to come up and just very briefly summarize what you are proposing for consideration tonight?
Sure, good evening, for the record, I'm Brandy Nelson. I'm a professional engineer with Ty &amp; Bond, and we're happy to be working with the town on recreational facility improvements. Just as Supervisor had said, we've been working with the town to update and evaluate moving forward with Rec Park West based on a two thousand thirteen and two thousand, older version, two thousand nine version of a master plan for the development of that site. The master plan back five or six years ago was laid out based on nineteen ninety-four recreational needs assessment that had been put together through, for the town to support some of the planning efforts in the town at that time. And it obviously is twenty-four years old, and development has changed in the town. The land that the town has available has changed, and given some of the public comment that's been received in the last two or three months, there has been expressed a desire to update that recreational needs assessment, to evaluate the existing municipal facilities in the town for athletic fields and how they're used, and evaluate whether they are sufficient or not sufficient. And so we, in response to those comments, I put together a proposal to the town to basically do three things. Taking a look at all the municipally-owned fields within the town of Red Hook, evaluate their existing condition, so that's a physical inspection of those fields. What are their dimensions? What are their conditions? What are they constructed of? What ancillary facilities do they have as far as walkways, stams, restroom facilities, parking areas, et cetera? And then the second phase of that would be to work with various representatives in the community, including the Recreation Director, the Athletic Director at the School District, and private sports leagues to really get good conclusive information regarding the regular use of fields. We have preliminarily put together some of the information on the use of fields specifically as it pertains to things like baseball and softball. And we have provided some of that information to this board previously, as well as to the Rec Department and at the public meetings, just scheduling out the different uses of the existing fields at Rec Park East. But we would go a little bit deeper, work more extensively with the private sports leagues, and get a comprehensive evaluation of usage, both now and in the future. We know from some of the preliminary information that we've received that there's currently already demand on the existing ballfields. Baseball in particular seems to have some demand. And there are some unmet needs currently, but we can do more comprehensive assessment of that. And then summarize that all in a report, get that information back to this board for your consideration in a draft form, and then finalize that. And then you'll have that as a tool both for short-term and longer-term planning efforts.
Okay. And just for the folks at home, you know, when we did start back in two thousand sixteen looking at beginning this project with the challenger field aspect to it, we did in fact touch base with our Rec Commission Director and asked them to confirm the need for additional fields and so on and so forth. But what we're talking about now is something more comprehensive and a document that we could all refer to. And I think I would just, you know, caution everyone that no document is perfect. I look to the last needs assessment that was done by a very reputable firm that at the time, whereas I brought this up once before, I really suggested we have three ice skating rinks, outdoor one. You know, sure, that'd be desirable, but I'm not quite sure that that would necessarily fall within the category of we need to have three outdoor ice skating rinks. But, so I think it's important that we update this information. Twenty-four years is a long time, although I will point out that our comprehensive plan, that's nineteen ninety, isn't it?
Because it was ninety-three.
Yeah. It's still... It's still thirty years old. Right. And so your proposal is really, at least for now, to try and get confirmation and answers and more specifics. I know that Ryan's done a lot of the legwork already for this.
Right, and the specific focus is on athletic fields.
Okay.
So that would be soccer fields, multi-sport fields, so lacrosse, football, as well as baseball, softball, tee-ball, and those kinds of fields.
Brandy, can I ask, how do you usually, if you know this, how would your firm go about assessing the need for programs that we don't currently have? Like, I can understand how you would talk to the Rec Director and the baseball coaches or the Little League about what the need for baseball fields is, but we don't have a town lacrosse league, for example, or, you know, we have a private soccer league, but not a town one. So how would you go about assessing the need for things like flag football space or lacrosse space?
Sure, well, I mean, that's the important why we want to reach out to the school district. A lot of times through the school, you get a sense of whether there's parent groups that are interested in pursuing additional sports that maybe the school can't offer, and does the town have facilities? We do want to work very collaboratively with everyone in the town, so if you know of someone who has a particular sports interest, we would certainly be reaching out. And I think having an opportunity at a meeting like this that's televised out to the community raises the level of awareness that this study's ongoing, but we're gonna be seeking information very broadly through the community, and we would rely on you to help us know who some of those right people are, given your close connections in the community.
Do you do any, like, public meetings? You know, I'm thinking of like the recent trails study where we had meetings all throughout the town, and the maps and things were at the different libraries and stuff. Is that part of this process, or is it a little bit more? Because it sounded like from your proposal, like, it's a little bit more top-down, you know, talk to the different leaders of the sports and kind of make some assumptions based on that and the numbers or whatever, but is there, how much public outreach is there really?
I think depending on the level of study, it can obviously vary. We were trying to take a very focused look at athletic fields, and so in doing so, there is a degree of sort of known quantity as far as people who are deeply connected to that kind of use already. But if you have a suggestion, certainly we're open to it. Having just sort of a very broad, open, public meeting that doesn't have a lot of focus, I don't know if that's really constructive and helpful in really getting into the issue of what the true need is. But, you know, if there is some degree of input that comes in through the public that really, you know, crystallizes around one particular issue, we certainly will highlight that.
Yeah, I think it's important that we get some public input to try and get some idea of what sports are in favor, and also informal play. I think it's very important for the folks at home to realize there is no rectangular field that the town owns slash controls can allow the public to use for lacrosse, for football, for any one of these sports. And so what we'd like to get some sense, and we have a very intelligent plan, I think, in draft form, that has fields that are very flexible, that can be used for many different sports, because trends do change. And I remember Ryan telling me from the nineties report that actually their demographic assumptions were right on the money the population is about what they said it would be twenty years later. But we have seen a little bit more shift from one sport to another. But if we make these fields very flexible to accommodate that, I think that's important. But I want to get a sense, John, you know, you and I have talked and others about things like lacrosse, how do we go out there and gauge the interest in folks just wanting a field to practice lacrosse? I mean, we don't need to have a paid sports league in order to want to have a field that our residents can just go to play one of these sports. I think that's really important. So is that something you'd be able to help us with, John, as to?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, through all the users of the facilities, we get some idea. Like, we didn't even know there was such interest in pickleball in our community, and that, you know, surely over the last year and a half, we've had a whole slew of people reach out to us for that. And as it turns out, we may be getting a pickleball, so that's really exciting.
Yeah, and actually, a few years ago, when I was working somewhere else, there was a very active now, kickball league. And they were, where I was working, they were reaching out about doing some fundraisers for things. And so I'm not sure who was coordinating that, like, in Duchess County, but that might be something to look into.
Right.
And, you know, I would be very interested in having just a space that, you know, John, you could set up however you'd like, but, you know, that somebody could sort of say, you know, Saturday at nine, I'd like to have two hours for a pickup, whatever, lacrosse game, kickball, flag football or something, but I want to be able to use a space for people to get together. And I, you know, and I know quite a few people that play adult, in adult soccer. And I, you know, and I know quite a few people that play adult, in adult soccer groups, you know, or some of them are leagues, some of them are less formal, so, but again, just to have, you know, evening play, you know, where you could have a soccer game.
Yeah.
Reserve a space to do that, I think, would be great.
An example of sort of an informal type group would be like an ultimate frisbee group. You know, they may not have a formal league, but my husband's, you know, a middle-aged man, and he likes to run around with his friends, and ultimate frisbee seems to be the thing. And they're always looking for a big flat field, you know, and they compete, honestly, they compete with kids' soccer mostly for field space. But that's the type of thing that, you know, sometimes isn't really well-known in the community. And so reaching out to people and saying, hey, you know, what are you doing for pickup sports? Can help us, and we will want to communicate very closely with the town to make sure we're reaching the right groups of people.
Randy, would you feel as though you'd be able to identify the challenge population who might want to have athletic facilities appropriate for them? In terms of the number or the nature of the population?
As far as the challenger field in particular?
Well, yeah, well, that would define a need for a challenger field and the nature of the challenger field.
Well, so, I mean, the challenger field, and we're sort of deviating from the needs assessment discussion, and I'm happy to talk about the challenger field, but the challenge, if you'll allow me the word, that the town put to us initially was how to create a sports field that is both handicap accessible, but also able to support the broadest range of play opportunities. And so synthetic turf is not just for handicap accessibility. It actually wears, it's very durable and wears well, and doesn't require the same rest period that natural turf requires. So, you know, John's got back-to-back-to-back games out on one of the baseball fields on Rec Park East. That turf just gets worn out from people running around and sliding into it, whereas the synthetic turf doesn't require the recovery period in between games. It also, when we have weather like we're having now where it's raining every day, it drains very well, so you don't have the mud issues, which also can damage the turf and delay its playability. So, you know, it's not, I don't want to get too hung up on the handicap. That's definitely a benefit of the synthetic turf, but there are a variety of benefits.
I'm trying to define the need for that in terms of how many people would find that necessary? What kind of a population do we have?
Sure, well, given the public comment that was just heard at the outset of the meeting, you know, clearly there's interest and concern that there are facilities available to all types of users in the community. You know, traditionally, I know when we went and talked with the town of Webster about their challenger field, they're up near Rochester. They work with several different ARC-type organizations where they're plugged into populations that have varying needs, and they make sure they're communicating with them about the availability of their particular challenger field. So they work then with the recreation director to program sports for their people, their clients who are differently abled than some of the rest of us.
So that kind of falls, probably if I'm understanding, you know, you're saying that that falls under what I was talking about, is just having space for unofficial activities, whereas like wouldn't necessarily, they may not have a challenger league, but they have the opportunity to schedule the field for whatever. It might be a pickup softball game, or, you know, some other type of use.
And there may not be a challenger league because there are not facilities. The other facility.
That's a chicken and egg kind of problem.
Right, exactly. I mean, there are very few challenger facilities in New York State, period. And the field that's in Wapinjor, which some of you may be familiar with, is not synthetic turf, it's an asphalt surface, so you can't play multi-sports on it. If you were to trip and fall on it, you could have a head injury. So it's not diverse in the ability to use it. So what we're looking at for the town of Red Hook is something that would give you broad usage.
Knowing the population of the kind of people who would want that would be a major factor in justifying what is done?
I think a factor, but not the only factor. I think, again, having the broad use is important so that you're not just, you're not segregating one group of the population to serve it. You're trying to serve as many different groups in the community as possible.
Can I just ask a question or make a comment? Because what's missing from this?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's not a public.
Is the community.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to hear from you.
Yeah.
I would like to hear from you.
Emily, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I've done a lot of public charrettes over the years, and I know that it is time-consuming and it might seem less focused to do kind of a larger public meeting where there are many different stakeholders represented. But that's how you engage in a process with integrity. And what you're describing is leaving out a pretty large segment of the community.
I'm sorry, which segment of the community are we leaving out?
The people who aren't necessarily engaged in organized sports.
There's no intention to leave out a segment of the community that's not engaged in organized sports. We just said we would welcome public input. And I'm not sure to what degree you've been following this process, but over the last three months, I think we've had six public meetings around Rec Park West. I apologize, I don't recognize your face from any of those.
That's okay, I don't recognize your face.
Okay. So, you know, the intent is certainly to engage the community broadly.
So how will you do that?
Well, we have been doing it, so that's part of the reason that we're here now is to respond to a desire to see a physical document that computes usage versus the facilities that the municipality already owns.
And that seems appropriate, you know, do you have that map that shows the sort of updated plan? I think you have on your options there down at the bottom.
This one?
Yeah, so I think it's appropriate that at this point, not to cut you off, Randy, but, you know, to mention that as a result of these public meetings that we've been having, you know, this is already a proposed change to the master plan for the project or the property that was adopted when it was purchased or shortly thereafter. So, you know, changes, we're already incorporating public input into the project as we continue to move forward with it. So I can certainly appreciate, we can always get more public input, and I appreciate that, but I do want to just, as Randy said, make it clear that we have been making a big effort to do outreach and to get input from people, and that this really has been being worked on in some shape or form in, pretty intensely since at least 2016, and has been approved and on the books from the 1990s. And, you know, granted, you know, people don't always, aren't always aware of things until money is allocated or things are going to be built. But I do want to just clarify that there's a lot of, you know, talk or documents circulating around town now that are somehow implying that this whole project either A came out of nowhere or some like backroom discussions. And that is really not the case. It's been being worked on in one shape or form or another for well over ten years and pretty intensely since 2016. And we've already talked about making some changes to the plan we were working with before, and so I think that we would continue to do that as we get input. And, you know, I think it's a good idea to update our needs assessment anyway, but that's certainly something that has come up in these discussions. And so now we're looking at how we could make that happen in a, you know, a helpful timeframe, I guess, instead of, you know, undertaking something that could be very expensive and take multiple years to get done, so.
Well, maybe with the advent of our new website, we could have a very simple, like, three-question survey. Are you interested in having, you know, an informal space to play a certain sport? Or would that be your questions to that effect? And see what kind of input we get? Because I think we do want to make sure that this multipurpose area here, these rectangular fields, open fields that can go in any direction, accommodate, you know, individuals' interests. So maybe we can take advantage of that with the website. And see if we could do some type of survey to get some more public input.
Yeah, I'd be happy to work with there on Survey Monkey and linking it to the website.
We can actually do it through our website.
Oh, I mean.
It has like forums that you can.
Does it, is it just buttons like yes, no, or tabulative? Or is there an open question?
We can do all of it.
Perfect, okay, great, that'd be great. We'd love to do that.
Okay. Very good, well, can we go to your proposal? And, you know, recognizing that the company's already kind of done some of the legwork because Ryan's been reaching out to all those groups, the schools, and so on and so forth. And the Little League, and we had, I think, at one of the info sessions, we had the president of Little League who gave us, you know, really good input about the size, field that he would like to accommodate with the.
Right, he actually mentioned to us there's an age group that isn't served at all.
That's not being accommodated, I think that's.
I think it's the ten to twelve, or the twelve to thirteen.
It's on one of those slides, right?
That one, I think, yeah.
Yeah, twelve.
Junior, junior baseball, right?
Right. And this is just not being accommodated at all?
Right, so those kids disappear for two years into an abyss of no baseball opportunities.
Right, and then, and so that's another area where, as part of public input, we've asked you guys to look at, could the field be done to accommodate, you know, this use?
Right, and we did provide an updated plan that does show that it could be accommodated at that location.
Sounds like this field is quickly going to become utilized a lot with all these groups and individuals that aren't being accommodated yet. Okay, well, we have this proposal here. And did we quiz you on how long you think it'll take? I mean, we'd rather have a better project than the fastest, you know, product.
Sure, well, you know, given the, some of the background information has been done, we think we could be back before the board at your next meeting with a preliminary update and draft findings to present to the board.
That sounds a little ambitious. Let's see how we do with our town website before we go ahead and say that we would need to do.
But ten thousand dollars for a month-long, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it because it feels like that's a different type of project than what you're talking about.
Well, so as I had mentioned to Robert earlier today, the scope of work we've been working under for the challenger field, as you have pointed out at previous meetings, has definitely evolved. And we have been facilitating the public meetings and the communications with these different potential user groups in that contract. That is outside of the scope of that contract. So what this does is it pulls it into the scope of this current proposal.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so I'm, I just want to say though, I brought that up before we had the public meetings for that purpose because I, you know, now we're sort of in a position where I feel like we have to do this because you've already done that work, given means. So whenever we have a contract that's starting to go out of the scope of it, we should be reviewing that at the town board and either making an amendment to that contract at the time before somebody does the work. I mean, we do that all the time with all kinds of consultants, so that's one thing. Another thing is that we, yeah, so maybe I interrupted you, I think, but do you want to continue with, like, what else do you think is involved in the town link and the whole project besides the work you've already done with the public?
Well, the principal things that have not been done are assessments of existing municipal fields. Our focus obviously previously has been on the design of a new field. So there's a fair bit of field work that, no pun intended, to go out and look at all the municipal-owned fields in the town and assess those. So that is probably the bulk of what hasn't been done. And then to build on the matrix that we've put together previously as far as use of fields, incorporate any fields that hadn't already been incorporated, so expand on that matrix. And we really need to engage the athletic director more deeply. He's had really cursory discussions with us about what their usage is, and we need to really go back to him in particular. And then engage with you on survey opportunities for public outreach and.
It doesn't mention it here, I don't think.
It's not, but it certainly could be added in.
The only proposal.
Yeah, I think that that falls under the category of the phase two tasks. That's all about communicating and engaging with stakeholders. And we do have a task there for stakeholder engagement, and we could focus that on survey as well. And then I guess if we're going to do a survey, we'd want to talk about how long the survey would be up to gather information. I think it's actually a good time of year. Everybody's going back to school, so people are a little bit more in a regular routine and vacations are less likely. So I think the timing is good. And then summarizing everything into a needs assessment report format for this board's use.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, Randy, thank you very much. Well, I think a month's ambitious, but you think you have a draft?
Right, we stay six weeks.
That's not the final report.
Yeah.
Right.
We're staying six weeks.
Well, as long as you feel like we've, you know, we've gotten some public input on those other recreational sports, informal, on fields and, you know, that kind of thing, I think that's very important to learn. You can learn a lot from our public. Okay, so what would we like to do? Would somebody like to make a motion to?
Can we talk about it before we motion a little bit?
Sure, yeah, sure.
I'm wondering, because I don't remember talking about this at town board meeting. I don't remember talking about deciding for the, no, I was here. You mean for the, when you talked about the CDBG grant or the CFA grant last time?
No, I think we talked about it at the last meeting. We talked about having this, I think you had refused yourself at the time.
That was for the CFA grant.
Okay.
And I was back there, so I was listening even though I wasn't participating. But that was about the CFA grant.
I thought it was the last, I thought it was the last, but maybe I'm mistaken.
I don't remember talking about asking Taiken Ban to put together this proposal. Does anybody else remember, because I just don't. I would have said at the time, I'll just say, what I would have said at the time is that I'd like to see a recreation assessment. I think that's one of the overwhelming desires of coming out of the public process, and I've been letting you know for a long time. But I don't know that it's appropriate to ask just for one proposal from one engineering firm, especially the one that's already doing our design work for the Rec Park. That feels really conflicted to me. And I'm wondering, do you ever do recreation assessments while you're in the middle of a project where you're building fields? Because it seems like that's not really the kind of thing firms usually do.
Well, I will admit that this process has not been linear. Typically, you know, if there's a planning document update, that that's happening at some previous point. I think in the case, if you're just focusing on Rec Park West, that that has occurred over the last few years through various community master planning exercises. And, you know, from what I've read about that process, there wasn't any call for any sort of needs assessment at that point in time. So this proposal is really a response to the comments that have been received through the public meetings process, wanting to see that matrix that we put together flushed out in a more detailed format. And building off of that for either decision-making or future master planning efforts or other recreational needs planning efforts.
But I guess, what I've heard from the public meetings is a desire for not just athletic fields, but for a full recreation assessment that might take into account all the types of recreation.
Well, I don't think that you're not saying that, I mean, looking at the previous one, right? The previous rec assessment and having looked at some of these things in the past, you know, there are guidelines on what type of rec resources you have, which is based on your population. And that's the chart that you were putting up there before, where some of that comes from. So you would be updating those kind of numbers as part of your proposal, right? So that we have the basics. And maybe it would say that they haven't changed from the previous proposal, but if our, you know, if they're very close to our current populations and whatnot.
Yeah, so typically for recreational needs, and this actually came up in the review of Hoffman subdivision, for recreational needs, there's a wide variety of assessing need. The reason we focus our proposal on athletic fields is because that is responsive to the comments we've received so far about athletic fields, multipurpose fields, soccer fields, football fields, lacrosse fields, baseball fields.
Comments from who, sorry? Comments from who?
Public comments that we've received, so.
These meetings? Because nobody's been bringing up what's not for the.
The recreation committee meetings, yeah.
Well, we started, I think, I think part of what Sarah's saying.
Well, we started, I, I think, I think part of what Sarah's saying and what I have in mind is, is that we, we started with athletic fields and, and now we're, we're studying the need for athletic fields as opposed, as opposed to starting with what, what kind of recreational facilities in the broader sense that we need. And there's a, a lot more recreation that aren't, isn't necessarily athletic. Look, look at an old user like me, the athletic fields won't do anything for me, but I don't.
Are you using those pieces of equipment over at Tidley?
Like, you, you know better than that. And, 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 you know, I, I think that, that, that's a question that has come up as to, as to what kind of recrea, what kind of, well, how do we, how do we, how do we provide opportunities for broad recreation here?
Right, so, and that's almost another question that could be evaluated as an entirely separate, more comprehensive report. It, it won't get you to the point of making a decision around Rec Park West, but it certainly could be done. A lot of our recreational facility assessment reports are in the scope of very large master planning efforts, either for institutional facilities, like private schools or higher education facilities, school districts, or town recreation departments that are thinking of making major capital planning efforts maybe the next twenty or thirty years, so.
But have you been usually contracted to be the designers for those projects?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But, I, so I guess I just, I have a problem with, with the same firm that's doing our field design also doing this. Not, I think, first, not, I'm sorry, Kristin, I'm done, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So that, and also, I, so it, it just makes me question, again, you know, I respect you guys as engineers, I'm not trying to cast aspersions on you, but just generally speaking with something like this just out in the ether, right? Then I think it calls into question, let's say that some of the discussions end up at the soccer club, for example, which has a lot of rectangular fields, says, those are open dawn to dusk at all times, the only restriction is you can't bring your dogs. So, sure, ultimate frisbee already happens there, I know, adult soccer already happens and we're happy to have, you know, recreational things happen on those fields. It just feels like there's not really an incentive there for that to necessarily come out in the recommendation if, if you guys are potentially in the running to also help us design fields, do you see what I'm saying?
Well, with all due respect though, I have to say the facts are the facts, right? So, what we have outlined in this proposal is really very fact-based. It's, what facilities does a municipality have, what condition are they in, what is their current schedule, who's using them now? Are those people getting the play that they need? It's, it's really not subjective, it's really just the facts of the community. And that, that is really what we're charged with doing for all our projects. And so it's not hard to be clear about that. And, you know, the, the information bears itself out. I think that case in point is when we put together this spreadsheet showing the current use, we were actually surprised how much use those existing fields are getting now, that's just baseball fields.
Right, but for example with that spreadsheet, so it has things like the Hanford tournament in the column for things that aren't being met, but the Hanford tournament is being met, you know, that's on fields, they've found time easily. Travel baseball, I mean, that's a, that's a policy discussion, does the town need to provide fields for travel baseball, right? So, what I'm saying is like, that is helpful, it's super helpful to have it rather than have just a list of who is always requesting fields, to have it laid out in a matrix. But then there's policy discussions of like, does the town, who are you going to be directed to partner with to try to find out what fields are available, you know, is it only the school, is it the private soccer team fields, you know? I just don't, I don't see that that's already happened with the public process. And I, I think having the same engineering firm that's designing out the fields also be the ones recording our comments for the public process and do our reckoning assessment, I just think it's, it's too much all in one firm, that's just, that's me, so.
I think you could also put a, put a band shell at one, at one side of the field, in, in the soccer field and have a music venue, which I, I see expect would be used rather frequently, for instance, for instance.
Oh, really? For instance.
But that's not going to come out of this because this is about athletic fields.
Yeah, so, it's not mutually exclusive, we can do this limited scope and review and then we can take up at another time and per, perhaps do an RFP out there to other firms to do a more comprehensive look since we're really just trying to assure that we are appropriating going ahead and starting this very preliminary portion of Rec Park West, which I think is, I mean, I think it's just very obvious that we need additional fields. We have no field that is owned by the town that can be used for a rectangular sized sport, whether it's lacrosse, soccer and so on and so forth. I know you weren't at all that info sessions, but that came up, somebody suggested there could be public use of the current fields at Rockefeller, that's actually not true, there's an easement that says that it can only be used by the private soccer club and has to revert back to agriculture when they're finished with that. And we looked into every suggestion, we not only looked into it, we asked the engineers to look into it to, to give us sort of preliminary viability of, of these suggestions. And, and I think we did a good job of that in the process and you did a good job, your firm, of doing that. I'm comfortable moving forward with this limited process to assure everyone that we do need additional fields and here's what they maybe should look like. Ultimately, you're right, we make the decision, like I know if you come back and say we need three ice skating rinks, I feel reasonably confident that this board will not expend funds for three ice skating rinks, so.
And the weather isn't helping.
The weather isn't helping. So, it's not a, a perfect or normal process necessarily, but I think we have been enormously responsive at the last hour to public requests and we continue to be so. And I will note, Sarah, that the public did not have a problem with, in fact, the public that asked for it, some of the individuals, Jim Hexton or another, had no problem with Tai and Bond doing it. In fact, they reminded me that they said they could do it quickly and for not too much money. So, I'm comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with our engineers. If we question, you know, their objectivity, then maybe they shouldn't be our engineers.
How do you know the public did have a problem with it?
Well, I'm just saying the individuals, there were a few individuals asking for it and they referenced for a needs assessment, they referenced the fact that Tai and Bond said they could do it. And so we're encouraging me to go ahead and to support them. So, they didn't say to me, you know, it shouldn't be Tai and Bond, it should be somebody else, that's all, so. Okay, shall we take some, some action?
Sure.
So.
All right, you're, you're moving to approve this expansion of engagements of the needs assessment?
Right.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion?
Yeah, I think this should have been discussed with the town board before they came with proposal. I think it's not an idea to have the same firm doing it and I think if we were going to do one, it should be larger in scope.
Okay, all right, well, I would certainly support expansion of it in the future when this is done.
Right, so I just would like to add that I, in this particular case, I do not have a problem with the same firm doing the proposal. We have, they already have a great deal of information about the situation in the community, so to have to go and pay another firm to get to that same level of knowledge seems inefficient and impractical financially for this, so. And I think your firm, it has always done good work, so, you know, I don't have a, a problem with working with you on this either, so.
All right, if there's no further discussion.
Let me just make one comment.
Yes, please.
Um, if, if, if you, if, if it comes to pass, as you're doing, doing some of this work, that, that this should be expanded, that the, the concept of recreation should be expanded beyond, you know, the physical activity, that you'll come back to us and with, with any suggestion of what should we, what else could we look at? People my age are, are not going to go, we're, we're not going to go out there and play anything athletic.
No, we do them walk around, Harry, we'll go to the room, go walk around.
Well, I'll walk, I'll walk around, but, but there may be other things that, that would be suitable for, for people who are not.
We will want to get input from every board member and I know you represent your constituents and so it's important that we hear everybody's perspective.
I think so. I think so.
That would be a good segue to remind folks that the Retro Community Center has lots of programs going on, some of which we support through the town and they are cultural in nature as well, including field trips to museums and to cultural sites and they have exercise programs and they have, including tai chi, which I've just been doing years, so, there, there are more of those things happening now in the last couple of years than ever and we invite you to check out what they've got going on there at the Retro Community Center. All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, I.
No.
No? You can't abstain.
No, I'm staying, you gotta.
Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll say no for, for now, because I think it's, I think we're, we're jumping.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, Brandy, very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. Thanks, Brandy.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, item number. Is, uh, oh, I'm sorry, we're at, item number three. So, folks, it's that time of year again to apply for another CDBG application and we have discussed over the past several months the possibility of making our current restroom facilities at Red Park East ADA accessible and also perhaps pairing with the anticipated renovation of the playground, perhaps an ADA walkways that would complement that. Those are some things we have already discussed, but what we're doing tonight is really just setting a public hearing for later in September to give the folks in the public and for ourselves as well some time to consider other options. And so if you have any suggestions for application, and just so, you know, the CDBG Community Development Block Grant Program really is for, to try and help under-stirred populations. And so, adults who are physically challenged are considered another sort of population, so things like retrofitting restrooms, which we did here in Town Hall last year, that qualifies for grant monies and we receive grant monies for that. So, that would be September twenty, I think it's, it.
Twenty fifth, you said it?
Twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth, did I get the wrong date? Apologies.
It says in here twenty sixth.
Yeah, we're checking. Twenty sixth is a Wednesday, so that would be your.
Twenty sixth, okay, did I say September eleventh? I must have made a mistake there.
That's it.
Okay, apologies.
Did you want it to be twenty sixth?
Well, I see October fifth is one page here, I didn't, I didn't know that's, that's your question.
September, yeah, so.
The resolution and the public hearing, they'll say September twenty sixth.
Yeah, if that's a Wednesday, that's correct.
Correct.
Okay, so this would be resolution number forty seven?
Forty eight.
Forty eight, thank you. Dated August fourteenth, establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Application. Whereas the town is considering submission of an application and we propose to receive public comment on that date and time and I would suggest seven thirty-five at Town Hall. And I assume, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Just think if we can be any more clear, if we do end up with any ideas in the agenda.
Yeah.
You know, so people will know what to come out for, that would be good. You and other people like to talk about these public hearings as opportunities for the public to come and weigh in on projects, but I think something like CDBG that's not like, super clear for people to understand what they might be weighing in on, so I don't know if there's a way we can maybe link to the information or something in the.
It, it should be on our website, so when people go and they look at the agenda, we'll have links there where they can go and look at the application
Yeah. Right. Right. Yeah, that'd be great.
And see suggestions for how those, those grant applications can be filled out.
You mean the form of application, because this is supposed to be an open-ended public hearing.
Right, yeah, no, exactly.
Yes.
To invite comment on any potential applications.
I just mean, so the only way the public knows that we're going to have this public hearing, right, is if they either watch Panda or they look at this agenda. But this agenda just says 2019 CDBG grant application and all I'm saying is, most people don't have a clue what that means. Put a little thing that just says, this is a community block grant through the county, blah, 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 here's a website for information generally on the program, do you know what I'm saying? Like, then people would actually know what it is.
Well, again, when we do our new website, they can go up and they can look at the agenda and we can have a link. So, we can have a description and a link and so they can find out more and I think that's the beauty of having, and they'll get a notification. Tomorrow's agenda is now available and then they could look at it and then we can have the links up there to some of these items. For more information, go to www and then they can find out more. And then, you know, at that point, we can insert things that we're thinking about as well, so, yeah. That's why it's so exciting to have this new website up and running. But be patient with us.
Sir, do, do you mean, for example, on the agenda, put in something like this little table about funding maximums that identifies the types of projects that are eligible? So, for example, affordable housing, public facilities, ADA accessibility, parks and recreation and so forth are eligible projects?
I mean, sort of, I guess what I mean is like, I, I just think, when you look at an agenda like this, you know, most of the items are for the town board to discuss and if the public wants to listen in, that's great, you know, unless it's a public hearing, they're not invited to comment. In this case, we're actually looking for their ideas, so there's nothing that says in our agenda, we can't have a little sentence below it that says, your idea is solicited or, you know what I'm saying? Like, that's all I'm saying, it's like, make it more clear that that's what we're looking for.
I understand, but I think in this case, if you're having a public hearing, I'm wondering if you want to put another line in your public hearing notice that says, you know, applications, eligible applications would include affordable housing, public facilities, da, 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 from this little chart and might that go a ways towards getting your question.
Yeah, I guess so, I mean, does the public hearing notice say that like the public's ideas are, are vested?
Yes.
Yeah, input from citizens, it's a, it's a standard provision for HUD.
It's very clear, Sarah.
Right, which says input from citizens groups is solicited right to guard in the town's application.
So, I'm just saying it should be in the agenda too, that's all I'm saying.
So, you mean the language about interest from citizens and groups or something further?
Sure, yeah, something like that, yeah. You know, most, most public hearings, we're just, we're discussing something the town board came up with, but in this case, we want them to come up with something, do you see what I'm saying? That's all I'm trying to say, I don't know if that makes sense.
Okay. All right, good, so, we had that resolution number forty-eight. We had a motion to approve, a second, all in favor?
Uh.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving forward, reorganization, Ethics Committee, we have one appointment to make this evening. We did finally have. We did finally have the chair of that committee meet with, I guess, both interested candidates.
Well, we couldn't find the other candidate.
Well, but we, we finally did, or they, they finally did.
There were one or two spots there.
There's one.
There's one spot, so let's look at where that spot is.
Yeah, well, there's, there's two Republicans and two Democrats still on, on the committee and Linda is an N O P.
Linda?
Yeah.
An N O P?
With a green flag, that's, that's, that's who Fred has recommended.
Well.
You know, I, I think you made a second thing.
No, he's got an updated, he did an updated thing he made with.
The other one is.
You have another communication there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but, but the other communication says.
This one says, I have had the pleasure of meeting Brenda Elsie last week and I think she would make a fine addition in the ethics board.
Oh, she changes mind, I, I thought, did I mis, how could I misread that?
Yeah.
Right.
Imagine that. Okay, so let's take a look at this list if we would, the vacancy we have is for a term ending in twenty twenty. a term ending in 2020.
This is where, this is what it.
And so the recommendation is to appoint Brenda Elsie, and I would, so move, but the recommendation of Brenda Cardi as the chair.
Second.
Is there any other discussion?
I misread it, I'm sorry.
And that's for a position ending in 2020, is that correct?
Twenty-twenty, the vacancy with a term ending in 2020, correct. And did I get to that part, so the folks at home, these are the members of the Ethics Board, and the reason that Harry was talking about political parties, which we don't like to talk about, is that there are actually some strict regulations about how many of what political party you can have on your ethics board, and so we always ensure that we don't have it imbalanced by one political party.
Do we need to reappoint Gail also?
Right, so Gail is a holdover at this point, her term technically expired at the end of last year, and so since it's a five-year term, I think it would move us to check in with her and make sure that she wants the additional five years.
She did say she was going.
Gail did? All right, I wouldn't mind just having her shoot us an email or something, and then, but what we can do is we can reappoint Fred as the chair, since that annual appointment is a holdover as well, 2018, so I would make that a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. So, Harry, if you see Gail or if they're meeting and you're meeting with them, if you'd be desperate, just shoot us an email if she'd like to be reappointed or not.
I did talk to her when we had, we had an issue that they adjudicated a few months ago.
Okay.
She said yes at that time.
Okay. All right, well, should we go ahead and then reappoint her, what do you think?
Yeah, I would.
Usually people send something that says they want to be reappointed.
Yeah, I'd feel a little more comfortable.
Yeah, let's just get something in writing from either her or Fred.
Just a quick email.
It should have, she should send it to Sue, C C Fred, or somehow have Fred on it, or Fred sent it, and C C Gail, but they should be on it, and it should go to Sue, blah, blah, blah.
Isn't that their agency, really?
Okay, all right, item number five. Correspondence, we just said correspondence, from the planning board, about site plan review, we have correspondence from the.
I have D E C.
D E C, yes, D E C is going to be doing some work on the Tivoli bays to try to control Fred Miatties, and so they are going to be using some chemical composition of Rodeo, or what's the other one? Okay, less there. And so we have an adopted L W R P, so they have to notify us, notify us of any actions they're taking, so they are sending that to us. And the last item of correspondence. I think maybe I have.
Just something about Municity.
Oh, yeah, Municity, right, I'm sorry. Municity sent us a proposal about the tax software, you know, we discussed at an earlier meeting whether or not we're interested in trying to accommodate this charitable contribution workaround to the federal new tax bill that limited the deductions for state and local taxes, and so Municity, who provides us such software, is saying that they've incorporated that capability onto the software, but there's a, you know, an increase in the pricing for that, so I think we should look that over and figure out how we're going to respond to them, because you get the sense that we're going to be paying for this even if we don't need the feature, which.
It's still up for grabs from the federal end as to whether it would be allowed, would be allowed to do it or not.
They haven't weighed in yet, and I'm hoping they do so soon.
There are proposed regulations that have been filed, they're not released yet.
Proposed regulations from the IRS?
Not released yet, yes.
Oh, interesting, okay, well, that's good to know, thank you for that update.
Did you say have not, or have?
Have not.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
They've been filed, it's like, they've been filed, but not released. I'm just gonna say that my husband writes the software.
Oh, okay.
This is exact software, so.
Oh, okay.
If it comes up on the agenda again, I will be accusing myself.
Okay.
Don't talk to me about it.
It will, it will be coming up again. Anyway, okay, I believe that's all we have for this evening, and we're going to go into attorney-client session for a few minutes, so is there any public comment before we do so this evening?
Thank you.
If not, thank you very much, and thank you all for coming this evening, and of course, thank you at home for coming, and I hope you enjoy the remainder of your summer. We'll be back here again for the first meeting in September.